This conference will now be recorded.
We thank all of you this morning. Welcome and thank you for joining. At this time, we will have our statement regarding our virtual meetings by Mr. Parsons.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. The opening statement for electronic meetings in light of the 2020 COVID-19 virus and current guidance regarding physical distancing to reduce the potential for spread, meetings of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission have transitioned to a virtual format. Regional public bodies were granted authority to conduct meetings electronically pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 and related legislation approved by the General Assembly of Virginia during the period of the governor's state of emergency declaration for COVID-19. While we do not know the exact duration of the current practice of electronic meetings, we will continue to function in this manner until such time as it is deemed appropriate to return to in-person meetings. That provided notice of this meeting and the means by which we are virtually gathered, the members of the public on August 24, 2020, through electronic posting on the Planner VA website and email distribution of notice to members, alternates, and known interested parties, including the media. This meeting will be recorded. Audiovisual recordings of the meeting and materials will be posted on the Planner VA website within 48 hours of the meeting. Any members of the public participating as an observer during the meeting today may submit comments or questions at any time during the meeting via email at rrtpoinput@plannerva.org or by using the online chat functions of the meeting platform. Those individuals who are observing by phone may be called upon to share questions or comments. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for members of the public to address the body. All comments and questions submitted during the meeting will be reviewed following the meeting, and to the extent practical, responses will be provided or posted on the Planner VA website. We asked that everyone identify themselves first when speaking, so we can more accurately record the activities of the meeting. All lines will be muted by the meeting administrator to minimize additional noise and feedback. You may unmute your line at any time to request acknowledgement from the chair. Staff will be monitoring the chat functions throughout the meeting to assure we do not overlook anyone wishing to participate as appropriate in the discussion. Does anyone have any questions regarding the process for assuring effective facilitation of this meeting or for how members of the public may participate? I'll now ask our clerk to certify we have followed the approved procedures for appropriate notice of this meeting and the means by which we are convening.
Good morning. This is Nicole Mueller, and I certify that we have followed approved procedures.
Our next task is to please indicate your presence by saying aye when your name is called during the roll call. Anyone who wishes to identify themselves following the roll call of members will be invited to do so.
I'll start with Charles City County, Mr. Coda. Chesterfield County, Mr. Carroll.
Hi, I'm here.
Mr. Holland. Mr. Winslow.
Here.
Ms. Haley. City of Richmond, Mr. Addison. Ms. Bray. Ms. Lynch. Ms. Newbell. Mr. Hilbert. Mr. Jones. Ms. Larson. Ms. Robertson. Goochland County, Mr. Lumpkins. Mr. Spoonhour.
Here.
Mr. Kilduff. Ms. Laskolet. Hanover County, Mr. Davis.
Davis.
Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Flag. Ms. Pritchard. Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Brannan. New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Hi.
Mr. Tiller. Mr. Evelyn. Powhatan County, Mr. Nordvik. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Shardine. Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Ms. Barnhart. Capital Region Airport Commission, Mr. Rutledge. GRTC Transit System, Ms. Tim. Ms. Adams.
Here.
RMTA, Ms. Dean. Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Here.
Mr. Ribble.
Here.
CTAC, Mr. Basham. Mr. Martin. DRPT, Mr. Brule.
Here.
Ms. Dubinsky.
Here.
Federal Highway Authority, Mr. Nelson. The FTA, Mr. Koenig. Ridefinders, Ms. Tisdale.
Here.
Ms. Ruffin. And the DOAV, Mr. Burnett. And I think I missed Mr. Duran. Is Mr. Duran here? This concludes the roll call for attendance.
Ms. Mueller, I see Mr. Kilduff is here as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, we want to take the opportunity to extend a welcome to our newly appointed alternate, and that is Ms. Anita Bonhardt from the town of Ashland. She's a council member there. And so, Ms. Bonhardt, we take this opportunity to welcome you to the Richmond Regional Transportation Plan Authority, I mean, Planning Organization this morning, and we look forward to many meetings with you, ma'am. And we will move on in administration part to the approval of our policy board agenda. Ask any comments, corrections, suggestions?
Move for approval, Kenova Peterson.
Second, David Williams.
David Williams.
It's been moved to probably second that we approve our policy board meeting agenda. Will you poll the members, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The board will now be voting on Item A1, the approval of today's meeting agenda. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, I believe Ms. Newbell was here this morning, so I'm going to call on Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Thank you. Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for Item A1.
Thank you. Item A2 is approval of our July 2, 2020 Richmond Regional Transportation Board Authority Meeting Minutes. Any corrections, revisions in the minutes? If not, the board, the chair will entertain a motion.
John, John Hodges, so moved.
Pat O'Bannon, second.
Thank you. Moved to probably second that we approve the July 2, 2020 Policy Board Meeting Minutes. Will you poll the members, please?
Yes, ma'am. The board will now be voting on Item Number A2, approval of the July 2 meeting minutes. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for Item A2.
Thank you. Item A3 is our public comment period, which is now open. I have not received an request to address this board. Mr. Parsons, have you?
I have not. I do see there are a number of members of the public that are joining us this morning. It may be worthwhile to make the request now if anyone wants to provide any public comment.
At this time, our public comment period is over. We have those that have joined us from the public. If you have any comments, we would ask that you would acknowledge yourself and speak at this time. At this time, no one has acknowledged their voice to speak, so we will close our public comment period. The chair's report. We have some changes, membership changes, which are exciting. We have a new chair and vice chair, and for our technical advisory committee, FY21, our chair is Noah Amos with the town of Ashland, and from our vice chair serving will be Kelly LeDuke of New Kent County. We absolutely welcome you to those positions, and we thank you for taking the opportunity to serve, as well as CTAC. We, our chair for 21 is Mr. Robert Basham from Goochland County, and also vice chair, Mr. Upton Martin from the town of Ashland. We welcome you as well, and thank you for your service on CTAC, and we acknowledge Ms. Bonhardt from the town of Ashland, a council member that is the alternate for our PTO policy board. So all of you, thank you for your desire and your commitment to serve. A5 will be our secretary's report. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you very much. I wanted to first start with our current work efforts update. You will get a presentation today on the Greater RBA Transit Vision Plan. So I will skip that in lieu of the presentation later on this morning. We are continuing work on our Connect RBA 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, and we are moving into the identification of our universe of projects. So all of the potential projects that may be useful for this region to address issues and needs, and that's going to give us our starting point to then narrowing down to priority projects and those that can be reasonably identified for funding through our various funding streams. On that regard, we do have, we had one public survey that was out for priorities, and we got over 500 responses to that, so we're very excited. That was our first full survey in regards to the long-range plan. We now have a second survey that's open that we have sent out a link to everyone, and it's through a platform called MetroQuest. It's very user-friendly. You can look at it on your phone as well. We've asked everyone to share, and thank you to those that have. It's getting some attention in the community, and we're excited about that. Again, it's early on in that process, but if you do still have that link and can share it within your networks, we would greatly appreciate it to get as much attention as we can to our long-range plan. If you need the link again, please let me or Nicole know, and we can send that back to you. Moving down the list, the Ashland-Trolley Line study is moving forward and kind of in concert with the Ashland-Petersburg study. There have been, as many of you know, there were a handful of smart-scale applications related to Ashland-Petersburg in this round. So we're excited about the opportunity and the possibility of getting some sections funded soon for this exciting regional project. As the Ashland, the Trolley Line and the Ashland-Petersburg Trail continue in their development, we are updating our regional bike bed plan with close coordination with all of our member governments. So thank you and your staff for your participation in that and working with Barb Jaycocks and Phil Rigan on identifying regional needs for bicycle and pedestrian usage. Our Ashland Complete Streets Pilot Project, the report is in its final stages, and we hope to get that to you soon. We are developing a story map, which is a visual tool for sharing information. There is a link in your agenda packet to that story map as it's being developed, so we hope that that will be completed soon. And then I think the last thing to highlight here is that the American Planning Association Virginia Chapter was planning, had rescheduled for later this September from early in the summer, and that has now been moved to a virtual format. It will be during the week of October 12, and we will have an opportunity to come back and reschedule the in-person Richmond Conference for the year 2022. So Richmond area gets some attention, and we have the opportunity, not just in this virtual conference in October, but again in 2022, to highlight all of the work that's being done in the region. So congratulations to everyone on that. Because we did not meet in August, there are two work status reports for June and July, and I'm scrolling through now. The June report is something that you're used to seeing, where it's a work summary text of all of our work tasks that you can see, and then it ends with a financial statement, the one-page financial statement, which has a lot of information for the last quarter. For July, we shifted to a new format, which you can see here, highlighted by the FY 2021 in the top header. This is a format that all of the NPA's around the state are moving towards, and we were just a little bit out in front. And the purpose here is to make it easier for you all to read and to get a better picture of where we are on all of our work tasks, as well as what the work that's being done and the status. So you can see each different work task has a page where you still get the same summary text of the work that's being done, but at the top of each page, you'll get a brief financial statement for each one that shows the overall budget for that task, how much has been billed for that month, and then the percent of funds expended. And then a reference page in the work program if you wanted to go back and review what that work task actually entails. So we hope that this will be useful, and again, as I said earlier, this is a format that's being utilized across the state by all of our peer NPA's as well, so that we have some more consistent reporting to our state and federal partners. The final thing, I believe, that was on my update is the annual report for FY 20, and that was included in your agenda packet for your information that has been submitted to our partners for their consideration. If there are any questions on any of the reporting, please let me know. The last item, on Item 5, Item E, I wanted to provide a brief update here on the CVTA. As you all know, the inaugural meeting of the CVTA was last Thursday, and we got accomplished what needed to be accomplished. I'm very proud of the entire group, and I think that, given the circumstances, it was a very successful meeting. The things to highlight with this group are that the wheels are in motion now to establish the first meetings for both of the advisory committees, the technical advisory committee, as well as the finance committee. The finance committee has been scheduled for September 18, and that is, we are preparing the agenda and will post that as soon as possible. The meeting notice is already posted on the CVTA website for those that are interested. It will be in person because of the size of the finance committee at the Planner VA offices with an opportunity for virtual participation by anyone who is interested in observing. We do not yet have a technical committee scheduled, and part of the reason for that is that we do not have appointments from all of our member jurisdictions yet on who will be serving on that advisory committee. So I would ask at this point for anyone who has not submitted those appointments to please do so. We can certainly follow up after this meeting with emails or messages to those members who have not officially made those appointments. And for our purposes, and Mr. Gregory can back me up, I think all we need is an email from each member jurisdiction saying that, saying who your appointment is and who your alternate will be for that technical committee. I think there will be opportunity at the end of the meeting, if the chair said pleases, for other member comments on the CVTA, but at this point, I think it's worth moving into our new business if that's okay with everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for your report. We will absolutely, as opportunity near the end of the meeting, to discuss or have your comments on the CVTA. We will move into our new business. B1 is our Unified Planning Work Program. Mr. Parsons, if you would take us through that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I've put on the screen, this is actually an item not related to our current work program. It's related to the FY 20 Work Program, which ended on June 30. As we finished out the year, there were sections of the work program where we did not have sufficient funds for each of the work tasks as we had identified. There were sufficient funds overall from all of our grant sources, so there was no danger of running short in any one area. But we were, there was a request was made from VDOT that we take the effort to clean this up so that we showed each of the work tasks with a positive or zero balance at the end of the work program. So this action is requested to take care of those individual work tasks where there was a shortage of funds. So all of the changes that are requested are here at the top of page 69, starting at work test 7110 and going down to work test 7430. In terms of the overall budget, minuscule changes in terms of funding changes, so anywhere from $1,500 up to $11,000 to cover each work task and make sure that it all balanced out at the end. The TAC recommendation was that the policy board support the revision to the FY 20 budget, and the actual requested is presented for a policy board approval that the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization approves the amendment to the fiscal year 2020 Unified Planning Work Program as presented. With that, I'd open it up to any questions or comments from the board.
If there are no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion at this time.
So move, Madam Chair.
And Pat O'Bannon, move the resolution.
We have second.
I believe Chris made a motion, Chris Winslow made the motion, and Pat seconded it.
That's all right. One way or the other. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Thank you. At this time, we ask that you poll the members, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Before I take the roll call, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Addison from the city of Richmond has joined the meeting. Also, I want to apologize for skipping Ms. Adams from GRTC during the first two roll calls. Ms. Adams, I will include you during the roll calls for the action items. My apologies. The board will now be voting on Item Number B1, FY 20 UPWP Budget Amendment. Going to start with Charles City County, Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Mr. Addison. Okay, I think Mr. Addison may have some technical difficulties. Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
And Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for Item B1.
Thank you. At this time, Item B2 is FY 21, FY 26, CMAC allocations. Mr. Bushens will present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just waiting a second to get the screen up. Okay, so this is the FY 21 to FY 26 RSTPC MAC allocations, excuse me. So just a little bit of background to refresh you all. The application and allocation cycle has been drawn out this year, a little bit longer than usual due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Generally, we approve allocations in April, but since we weren't able to meet and then the SIP was suspended, it's been drawn out. VDOT has now recommended that the TPO move forward and finalize our allocations. So staff has worked with VDOT to review all of our existing projects and their schedules and funding needs to make sure those were addressed first. And then the new project selections were vetted through TAC, and as you all may recall, in the spring, the TPO adopted a prioritization ranking for each of these projects. So we've used that in developing the allocations plans. This last item is not for you today, but we've also documented the future needs for all of the projects, so for future cycles, it'll make it a little bit quicker for us to review and kind of get a sense of what the existing commitments already are. So this went to TAC last month. TAC was initially presented with two different allocation plans. So one approach used the typical approach that we've been using in the past, starting at zero balance entry in year one, increasing the balance entry so we have flexibility as we get to the later out years. The second approach borrowed from Hampton Roads, and it had a fixed 5% balance entry across all six years and allocated more funding and selected more projects. Tax recommendation was to go with the approach that matched the way that we have been doing it, which is what is presented in your agenda packets. So I'll go over some of the new project selections with that in a moment. I did want to note that the vote from TAC was pretty narrow. It was five votes in favor, four opposed, with two abstentions. And the reason for that was the second part of the motion. TAC also recommended to prioritize projects from the alternative that they did not select for this upcoming funding cycle. So that has created a split on the TAC vote. So these are the new projects that were selected. For RSTP, you can see we worked down the priority order. There's a lot of studies. We have the West Broad Street Intersection Improvements at Dominion and Cox, West Broad Street Pedestrian and Transit Improvements, Shared Use Path on Route 1. I will note the IJR on Route 2A. I will note the I J R on Route 288 was lower ranked. But since it it's a study, it was a much less expensive project, so we were able to fit it in where we couldn't fit any of the higher ranked projects. For C Mac, same thing, we worked our way down the priority list. So the first project is the next phase of Richmond Signal System Update. There's a Route One shared use path again, Knuckles Road pedestrian improvements, Brook Road and Hilliard Road Trail, Old Bermuda 100 roundabout, another roundabout in Eastern Henrico on Route 3360 in Beulah. I will note this is for P E only, so the application only requested funding for the first phase of the project. They will be seeking funding from other sources or coming back later to request the rest of the funding. And finally, Brad McNear Parkway was the last project, and that's a roundabout and access management. So staff generally agrees with the TAC recommendation. We agree with the new project selections. We also agree with the overall allocation plan that was selected. However, staff does not agree with the recommendation to prioritize the projects from the alternative approach for this upcoming cycle. There's three main reasons for that. The first is historically, we've always started with a clean slate. Starting with that clean slate ensures that we're only funding the best projects. So if something new comes in and it scores better than these projects that were submitted this round, it should get the funding because it's better addressing the needs that we've identified as a region. Secondly, by prioritizing those projects, it really discourages staff and TAC from looking at alternative approaches to funding in the future. If we're going to run the risk of locking in those other projects, we do have a concern about presenting more than one funding alternative to TAC in the future. And thirdly, and I think this one's probably the most important, the entire RSTPC Mac program is under review right now. So starting this month, we have a small subcommittee from TAC working under our UPWP task 7420 dot one to update and review these the guidelines for the entire program. So we're going to be looking at scoring. We'll be looking at the allocation process, transfers, leveraging, everything that goes into this. Trying to really line it up with the L R T P process that's underway and also factoring in new sources of funding like the CVTA. So this is already underway. If we did want to make any significant changes to the program, we've staff feels that this is the most appropriate way to do that. So if we did want to consider locking in funding from on previous application cycles or unsuccessful projects, for example. So on the whole, staff agrees with the allocation plans as presented to you. We just don't agree with the recommendation to prioritize those additional projects. In addition to the TAC and staff reviews, this also underwent public comment under our new engagement plan. So this was a 15 day public comment period. It ran from the 18th of last month until yesterday, the second. We had a map of all the candidate projects on the website and the draft allocation tables that are in your agenda packet were also posted. We shared a request for comments with our C TAC and TAC committee members, as well as our interested parties lists. And we did, in fact, receive two comments, and these are posted on the agenda page now. One comment was in favor of the allocation approach, especially the supporting the West Broad Street pedestrian and transit improvement project receiving funding. The other from the Southern Environmental Law Center disagreed with the allocation plan entirely. They suggested that more funding should be going towards our active and public transportation projects and less towards the road projects that are locking in the business as usual. So those are the two comments. As I mentioned, they're on the website, on the agenda page, so you're able to view those in their entirety. But essentially, it was one supporting and one opposed to the plan. So today, we are requesting action from the policy board. The action would be to approve the allocation and transfer of RSTBG and C Mac funding as presented in the tables in your agenda packet, including selection of the new projects, which these are the same ones we went over before, but there are seven RSTP projects. And then there are seven C Mac projects as well. The second part of the motion is the TAC recommended piece that staff disagrees with. So that would be to prioritize the following projects for funding in the next application cycle. So there's the Route 60 shared use path in Chesterfield, Whole Street Project Phase Two in the city of Richmond, Springfield Road intersection improvements in Henrico, the P E phase only for the Magellan Parkway extension in Henrico, Centrilia and Old Wrexham roundabout in Chesterfield, and the Vaughn Road overpass P E phase only in Ashland. And I will note the two with P E phases only are full projects. The intention was to have just the first phase funded through the M P O so they could leverage that for smart scale or other outside funding. And then for C Mac, there would be one project that would be locked in, which would be the Ashcake Road pedestrian improvements in Ashland. So that concludes the presentation today and the requested action. Again, I'd just like to reiterate, staff generally agrees with the approach recommended by TAC. It's just the second piece of including these seven projects for the upcoming cycle that we are concerned with. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Pat O'Bannon, I have a question, and I'm I'm going to admit that I'm confused, and that's why I'm asking. So the as presented motion, because it said, well, it says as presented at the end. I don't know. What does that mean? Does that in? Does that differ from what the TAC majority supported? I don't understand. I mean, what are? Presented, there's a lot of stuff in here, and I was trying to follow it. I apologize.
Yes, ma'am. The the allocations as presented are the tables that are at the back of the staff report. So those are only FY 21 to FY 26. So that's the first piece, which would just be the allocation portion. The second part of the motion is we moved it down separately to prioritize these additional projects. So yes, it matches exactly what TAC recommended. We just split it. So should the policy board decide to remove the second piece that's easily able to be accommodated?
So you're saying you could split the resolution? That's what I'm trying to understand. I'm not sure.
Sure. Let me just go back a couple. So on the on the first page here, the first section of the resolution where it says as presented, that just includes the allocation tables. So the allocation tables in the staff report are all the existing projects and then the seven new projects that are selected for RSTP and then seven new projects for C Mac. So that the that part of the I guess that part of the resolution could stand alone. The second piece, which was also part of the TAC recommendation, and that's why we've bracketed it here, was the prioritization. So that's separately, it's included with the same resolution, but we've put it as its own item in the resolution. So should the policy board want to split it, we could split it here and say the prioritization has a separate vote from the approval of the allocations and and take it as two separate motions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Winslow.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve the funding allocation for the projects listed and the prioritization as recommended by the the TAC. These projects are worthwhile, and I understand staff's concerns, but I think it's time to to have them prioritized in this next cycle so that jurisdictions who have been after some of these projects for a long time can get some finality to them. Point.
Mr. Winslow has made a motion to approve the approve the projects that have been recommended as well as, and it's a joint motion, Mr. Banner, so as well as the recommendation for the policy board to prioritize funding for FY 22 to FY 27 applications cycle. The motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're moving moved in properly second. Will you poll the members, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hodges.
Are we going to have any discussion of the motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hodges. The floor is open for discussion.
Since you've recognized me, I did want, I indicated earlier that we could support either the staff or the TAC recommendation, the town of Ashland. But our TAC representative, the new chairman of the TAC, Nora Amos, felt strongly that we should continue to follow our procedures. So the town would prefer to support only the part of the TAC recommendation that's supported by the staff and would prefer that we use the regular order for the following fiscal year. Even though two of our projects, two in the town of Ashland, are included in that second year, we believe that these projects stand on their own, and when the update process that is done, as indicated by Mr. Parsons, that will be done, that will be reviewing how projects are prioritized, we believe our projects will continue to get support. So just wanted to comment that we could only support the first part of Mr. Winslow's motion.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
And I agree with Mr. Hodges. And that was why I was, I'll always just say that's why I was confused. I was trying to figure it out. And but I agree with exactly what he said. Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Are there any other comments or during this time? I can say that I'm in agreement with staff recommendation, especially because we're in the process of rewriting and going through our policies. So New Kent stands in agreement with that. We do have a motion on the floor. I understand why the vote was split before. Understand that. So at this time, if there's no other comments, we're asked it.
I would just agree with the the chairman. Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you. Ms. Mueller, will you poll the members, please?
Yes, ma'am. The board will now be voting on item number B two, the FY 21 to FY 26 RSTPC Mac allocations. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Mr. Addison. Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Mr. Lumpkins.
No, no.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
No.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
O'Bannon.
Nay.
Mr. Thornton.
Nay.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Nay.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
No.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Nay.
G R T C, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
And Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Abstain.
That concludes the roll call for item B two. That motion has failed.
Thank you for calling the members.
I would like to to move the first part of Mr. Winslow's look for approval for that allocation.
Madam Chairman, second.
Second.
Is removed in properly second that we move the first portion, which is which is the approval of the elevation, then the discussion. Here in nine, Ms. Mallory, you poll the members, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow. Mr. Winslow, can you hear us?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
G R T C, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
And Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for item B two.
Thank you. Moving on to item B three, Regional Transit Vision Plan. Mr. Jacox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. This near term, five to seven year look at the long range 2040 Transit Vision Plan has offered us the opportunity to strategically consider the next most feasible steps for enhancing transit throughout the region. The study was funded by D R P T, and we were assisted by Kim Lee Horn and guided by a working steering committee over the past 18 months. We've given you periodic updates along the way. The steering committee consists of the five localities that are touched by transit, three representatives from the C TAC and representatives from D R P T, Ride Finders and G R T C. And we are looking to you today to adopt this strategic plan to take us forward. The Kim Lee Horn team is here today to present and bring you up to date since our last full presentation before you was back in in February this year. They will be available for questions at the end, and we'll consider the resolution that is also placed at the end of the of the PowerPoint. And I'll share after that story map that we've created, kind of an executive summary, a resource for all to use, the help guide folks through through this whole process and what the recommendations are. We also have the chat box available for anyone who has questions throughout the presentation. I'll be monitoring that while while Sarah and Ashley go through the presentation, but also have questions at the end. So we'll start off with Sarah Serino with followed by Ashley Licklider and Ben Chambers from Kim Lee Horn also is here for technical questions. So without any further introduction, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thanks, Barbara.
You can be advancing the slides. Thanks.
We could advance the slide to the next. Thank you. Thanks, Barbara. And as Barbara mentioned, it's been a while since we last spoke with all of you. And so we thought we'd take a step back and walk through the study purpose and methodology and then dive into the recommendations. So this study came about to build upon the Greater R V A Transit Vision Plan. That was a study that was completed in 2017, and that study looked at the long term transit recommendations for a base year of 24. The purpose of this study was to look more near term and to build upon that study as well as recent transit improvements in the Richmond region. Those improvements included the Pulse B R T, implementation of the Richmond Transit Network Plan, extended service to Short Pump, and most recently, the new demonstration service in Chesterfield on U S Route One. The previous study looked at the longer term impacts and The previous study looked at the longer-term impacts and longer-term recommendations. So in this study, we looked at just the high-frequency routes that could be implemented in the near-term that would help to advance towards that longer-term vision from the Greater RBA Transit Vision Plan in 2017. Next slide, please. This study had three major steps. Each of the steps built upon the previous step and narrowed down the recommendations. In the first step, we started with 24 corridors. They all came out of the 2017 study. And we focused on looking at where are the locations where there is the population and employment to support high-frequency, near-term service. We determined that there was 12 corridors that were most viable based on that initial screening step, and we advanced those to the detail analysis. In the detail analysis, we dug a little deeper, and we looked at potential ridership, as well as the infrastructure for pedestrian network and connectivity, and the suitability for roadway improvements. Coming out of that step, there were five corridors that were recommended. And Ashley will dive into each of those a little more detail later on. But in this next step, the implementation feasibility, we really looked at the service plan options for each of those five corridors. What would that service look like? How would it interact with other existing routes? As well as the operation and maintenance costs for running the service, the capital cost for implementing the service, and then compared each of those corridors for the benefits. And those benefits looked at items from the initial screening detail analysis, as well as the implementation feasibility. As part of this whole process, we had a steering committee, as Barbara mentioned, that was highly engaged and participated in meetings, as well as reviewing our recommendations. Next slide, please. The 20 study corridors that we looked at are all shown on this map. You can see the three colors correspond to those three different steps on the previous slide. The initial screening shows those corridors in yellow that were screened out as part of the initial screen. In some cases, it was not the whole corridor, but it was a portion of the corridor that just wasn't really ready for near-term service. Red corridors were screened out in the detail analysis step, and then those purple corridors are the ones, the five corridors, that we advanced to the implementation feasibility step. Next slide. This map just shows in more detail those five purple corridors. Those were Broad Street to Short Pump between Willow Lawn and Short Pump, Midlothian Turnpike, and that corridor extended from downtown Richmond to Huguenot. West End South extended from downtown Richmond to Regency Square. An airport corridor that extended from downtown Richmond to the airport, and then Route 1 North extended from downtown Richmond to Param Road. Next slide.
Thank you, Sarah. So as Sarah mentioned, for each of these particular corridors, we looked at some service planning options that would be feasible, working with the existing service provided by GRTC. So we developed two options that we'll look at in the next few slides. The first option looked at service along the corridor in 15-minute increments on the inner portions of the alignment of the corridor, and 30-minute service on those further extents of the corridor. The second option looked at 15-minute service throughout the day on the entire length of the corridor. And each of these service plans covered seven days of service. Ultimately, we want to make sure that we clarify that any of the future service plans will be based on GRTC approval and available funding for the service. And we appreciate GRTC providing us with their annual operations and maintenance costs per bus mile, which is $7.63, and that will play out as we go through the next slide. For each corridor, we looked at a range of different capital costs. And what we're going to talk about moving forward are the three corridors that our steering committee deemed as most viable for near-term service implementation. As Barbara will present later, we have all five corridors covered in the Story Map, but today we want to focus on the three that we think are readiest for that service implementation. So these corridors perform best in terms of their potential benefits to the community, as well as their links to local planning efforts. So the service plan options really allowed us to project the level of investment that would be needed by the region to get service up and operational. For the low cost, this middle column you can see on your screen, what we did is we looked at just the basics that would be operating for operational service. So that would be the fleet vehicles, as well as just the simple bus stop infrastructure. On the far right, you can see a higher level of capital cost, which would include more infrastructure-based improvements, such as sidewalks, potential technologies such as transit signal priority to improve the service, as well as signal improvements for ADA accessibility, countdown pedestrians, signal heads, and those types of things that would really provide more accessibility to the service. So as you can see, there's quite a range in the difference of cost between the low capital cost option and the high capital cost option. And what we really want to iterate is that these can be done over a period of time. We don't have to do the high capital cost on day one to operate service. We can start with the lower implementation to just make sure we have the fleet vehicles and the bus stops, and we can add on additional amenities, shelters, benches, pedestrian accommodations, and the traffic signal technology. So similar to what we talked about with capital cost, we have a range of operating costs that work in line with those two service options I mentioned earlier. So option one, that has 15-minute service on the inner parts of the corridor and 30-minute service frequency on the exterior of the corridor, and then option two, which looks at 15-minute frequency through the majority of the day for the whole corridor. So obviously, the more frequent service is going to come with a higher operational cost. So the low cost, you can see in that middle category, to the high cost range from around $5 million on an annual basis to almost $9 million. And I do want to clarify that this would be in addition to service that GRTC, the operational cost for the GRT service that already runs along these corridors. In many cases, we're extending the limits of the service on the corridor, and in particular, I want to identify for corridor F, there's a little bit of a nuance there that we're going to talk about in the next slide. Thanks, Chad. So the three corridors we identified as most viable and the associated service plan options were the Midlothian Turnpike Route, the Route 1 North Route, as well as additional service to the airport. On Midlothian Turnpike, what we identified as most viable is really that Service Plan 1 option, where we're looking at 30-minute service on the extent of the corridor, and that would be the same for the service on U.S. Route 1 to the north. For corridor F, which we identified as an additional route to the airport, we had initially looked with the steering committee at additional service along Route 60. What we ultimately decided was the better benefit to the community was actually to look at improving GRTC Route 7 service. So that was the ultimate recommendation that the steering committee is putting forward, is putting a higher service frequency, that 15-minute service frequency on GRTC Route 7. What are the next steps that would need to occur to carry these corridors forward? Certainly, in a visioning plan, we did not get down to the level of detail of exactly where each stop would be located along each route, or the specific service plans that would need to be integrated with GRTC's existing service. So those are some of the next steps that would need to be taken to advance these corridors forward. Additionally, we would need to go through the process of securing funding, both for those operating costs that were mentioned, as well as capital cost. Then the next steps would be procuring the vehicles, making sure we're designing and instructing whatever improvements are deemed necessary for that day-one operational service, and then the excitement of actually getting the service out to serve our communities and provide added transit amenities to the community. And at this point, we would be happy to address any questions that maybe have of the committee, and we also are going to have Barbara present to you the Story Map, which is currently available on Plan RBA's website, that you can review, and review all the detailed analysis that was done for each of the corridors.
Thank you, Ashley and Sarah.
Thanks, Ashley and Sarah.
Ashley, this is Kenova Peterson. I've just got a question, actually, on the Route 1 North corridor that goes to Param Road on Route 1. It seems like to me the more logical termination would have been at Virginia Center Commons in that area. Is there a reason why it was terminated at Param?
That's an excellent question, for a lot of questions that was at stake with the steering committee, and something that was determined as redevelopment opportunity can happen in Virginia. It would be extended further to the north, but at this time, the group thought that the logical termination was closer to Param and those adjacent land uses until such time that more development occurs to the north. Excellent question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. If there are no more questions, or are we ready to entertain a motion for this resolution?
So thank you very much, Ashley and Sarah, and for all the hard work of our steering committee. I really appreciate everyone sticking with us for the last 18 months. There's been some very healthy and robust discussion about all of this, and I think it's exciting to be able to present this next step. And I don't see any questions in the chat box that we've collected over the presentation. So we'll go ahead, and I'll present the motion. The following resolution is presented for the Policy Board Review and Approval. Resolves that the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization adopts the proposed plan for the Regional Transit Vision Plan, near-term strategic technical analysis of five corridor segments, considered for enhanced transit in the near-term planning horizon, which is we estimate to be five to seven years.
You have heard requested action. Do we have a motion?
David Williams, I'll make that motion.
John Lumpkins will second.
It's been moved in properly second. Do we have any discussion?
There is one, there is one question in the chat box from Reverend Ben Campbell. He wants to know, Ashley, does the airport route go on 60 or 9 Mile?
Good question, Ben. It goes to the northern route to 9 Mile, where the existing GRTC Route 7 service goes, so it would increase the frequency of that current route's service.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Ms. Mueller, will you poll the members, please?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't catch who made the second to the motion.
John Lumpkins.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. The board will now be voting on item number B3. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
And Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for item B3.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item B4.
Oh, Chad, excuse me, Madam Chair. We did have the Story Map. If we could spend about two minutes, it's the next slide. The link is on there.
We'll give you two minutes, ma'am.
And we'll share the Story Map. You can look at it at your leisure, but just to give you a glimmer, it's a really good way to understand the routing and all the different considerations. So Chad, I think it's on the next slide, the final, after the resolution. Right here. So if you can just hit the... We just wanted to let you know that this is available for you to share with your constituents and with anyone who has questions. There are, there's a toolbar at the very top, so you can scroll through quickly this way, so you can see the initial analysis phase, as well as the subsequent, more detailed phase, looking at ridership potential and all the other factors, transit dependency factors that went into the decision-making. And then on each route, you can also click on the route and find more details about, you know, about each of the routes. We've also embedded links. You can also see how the routes compare to each other at both phases of the analysis. And implementation feasibility, summary of a lot of the cost analysis and how, you know, we went through the high-level costs, both operationally and capital costs. Feasibility, you can also click and link to the larger document. You can see all the cost ranges there. Again, the benefits comparison of each of the routes to each other. I think the good thing about this Story Map, that we were really pleased with Dan Mato's work. He's a Wilder Fellow with us this last year, who has really put this, put this together. It's a good interpretation of all the work that went into this in one stop. You can, you can carry this with you on a thumb drive and share it with whomever you would like, with all the links. And that is pretty much just a quick overview. So take, take your time. We'll make sure you have the link. It's on our website, and you can look at it with your own time. Thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you for your presentation. We'll be moving forward now to B4, which is a discussion that came up this morning in our executive meeting. It came, and that is our A-annual Transportation Forum. This year is supposed to be hosted by New Kent County. We had a couple of locations that would have been perfect post-COVID-19. However, because of social distancing and other circumstances, we are unable to find a location that is large enough to accommodate all of us. It was recommended this morning that the annual transportation forum be deferred until the spring of the year. I'm now entertaining any comments on the transportation forum. Being none, the request is to have a motion to move it to the spring of 2021.
Madam Chair.
David Williams, motion, motion to move the forum to the spring of 21.
Second, and I would like everyone to please say a prayer that we have a vaccine by then.
Yes.
Amen.
Thank you. It's moved to second in a discussion. Ms. Mueller, will you poll the members, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call for item B4.
Thank you. Item C is agency and committee reports. We will start with transportation agency reports with FEDOC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick update on...
Quick update on the CTB July meeting. The I-64, I-664 presentation was made. V-trans mid- and long-term needs were discussed, short-term needs were adopted in January of 2020, long-term are anticipated in the summer of '21, and they're working on identification of the V-trans long-term needs. Performance measures, the midterm performance report is due in October of this year. There was no August CTB workshop. There was an August 14th action meeting to discuss the master agreement for tolling on the Hampton Roads Express lanes. The next CTB meeting will be another virtual meeting, we believe. September 15th is the workshop, September 16th is the action meeting. On smart scale round four, all final applications have been submitted. Richmond District had 78 final applications, 44 are within the RRTPO boundary. Validation is underway. Completion of the validation is anticipated in December of this year, and Richmond District Planning Section will facilitate all communication and coordination with the applicants during the validation and scoring process. There's been no updates on the six-year improvement plan or the interstate studies since the last time we spoke. And did get a request to include an update from the Port of Virginia in my update to this organization, so I'm going to do that very briefly. The port adapted quickly to the pandemic and continued to operate at full capacity. The volumes continue to grow with a 22% growth in fiscal year '19, meaning they moved over 41,000 containers through the terminal, which removed about approximately 60,000 truck trips from the I-64 corridor. The growth that are in volume at the terminal, they've started using two tugs and two barges. The addition of the second tug allows for six-day-a-week surface, service and the capacity to move more than 1,400 containers each week. That all means shippers have a shorter truck travel times, quick turns at the gate, and multiple turns in each day. The investment that the TPO and state transportation is making at the terminal is translating into economic opportunity across the Richmond region. In the first quarter of this year, over $132 million of investment and over 400 jobs were added by five companies in Henrico, Chesterfield, and Hanover, and the city as well. And the RSTP funding provided by the TPO is advancing a new drop lot and gate investments to improve throughput at the gate and address safety concerns of containers being dropped outside of the gate when the terminal is closed. And last thing I have is willingness to hold a public hearing was posted for eight intersections in Chesterfield and Henrico County. Those are for some signal improvements at those intersections. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Being a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
For your report. We have DRPT, and your report today.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Few updates from DRPT. We are also working, we're in a similar state to VDOT on our six-year improvement program. The difference for DRPT is that we have transit agencies and commuter assistance agencies like Ridefinders that rely on operating assistance that is allocated on an annual basis. So we are preparing to take action items to the Commonwealth Transportation Board to add funding for the second quarter of this fiscal year to our current six-year program. The CTB is, I believe I heard yesterday, it's going to be a one-day meeting on September 16th, and it will be virtual. But that would include some additional, an additional quarter of transit operating assistance for agencies like GRTC, and then commuter assistance operating to support Ridefinders. Additionally, we are going to also program some more federal funding for the Section 5310 of vehicles through our capital assistance program. We'll reevaluate our allocations once there is action from the General Assembly on a revised biennial budget that we are hoping provides us with some flexibility within our allocation formula. Next up is the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority. Obviously, that was something that was passed during the 2020 General Assembly session. We are continuing to work to stand up the Virginia Passenger Rail Authority, and we do anticipate appointments of board members to be released soon, and for the authority to have their first meeting this fall. We are continuing to work with CSX to finalize the agreement that would memorialize the arrangement that was announced last December. That is going to give us the framework that's going to allow for significant, significant expansion of rail service between Richmond and DC over the next decade. Switching gears a little bit to our intercity bus program, the Virginia Breeze, we did successfully launch new service to Richmond on August 7th. That provides daily connections to DC, to Farmville, to Danville, and Martinsville. That service, even with very strict COVID safety protocols, has done quite well in that initial launch, and so we look forward to seeing that service continue to grow when things get better and more folks are looking to travel. And finally, an update from Amtrak. Amtrak has been running a very limited service since April, but effective September 7th, Amtrak is going to increase our state-supported rail service to 80% of the pre-pandemic levels. So that's going to include an additional Norfolk train each day and an additional Newport News train each day, so both of those trains connect through Richmond, so that is increasing the service that is available here in the Richmond area. We do not anticipate any additional service beyond that increase through Richmond until early 2021. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your report this morning. We will move on to CTEC, Ms. Basham.
Madam Chair, I don't believe Mr. Basham's with us today. The report was included in your agenda packet. If anyone has any questions, I believe Mr. Lance is with us as well, if, to address any, any particular concerns. Otherwise, the report's there for review.
Any questions? Okay, we will move on to, excuse me, other business. We're now open our public comment period. We have public that's joining us. If you have any comments, please, you have the opportunity to now to speak. I see none in our chat box, so we will close our public comment period. Future meeting topics. We have this opportunity, if there's anything that you would discuss further, or you would like to be brought to this body, we would ask that you would submit it to Mr. Parsons. And?
And?
Do we have any comments?
And member comments?
Section 3. If you have any comments. Bye.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, just a, we have three members of the CBTA Finance Committee here on this meeting today. So there are, there are three items coming up, Mr. Parsons, I was addressing this to you, coming up that are needing a direct attention on that first meeting on the 18th, I believe it is. I was going to request that if you could share with all the members of that ahead of time what the other transportation authorities in the state have done related to those three critical items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Peterson, that's a, that's a, that's a good request, and we can certainly provide a comparison across the other, at least the other two larger authorities in terms of what, how, how they've addressed those items.
Thank you for that, Mr. Peterson. Are there any other member comments?
Madam Chair, if it's all right, I would like to share that this is, I think the intent was CBTA-related, but it's, it's good information for everyone on the, the Policy Board as well. We have received over 20 specific comments in support of the Ashen to Petersburg Trail and the importance of that as the region moves forward. So we are preparing a summary of those comments to be shared with TAC, and we can certainly share that with, with Policy Board members as well. But I just wanted to know, you to know that people are interested and are, are participating.
That is great news. Absolutely. Thank you for sharing. I can tell you that I had the privilege of being at inauguration of Central Virginia Transportation Authority on last week. It was indeed a learning experience for little old me. However, we would like to recognize that Mr. Frank Thornton is the chair for the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, and so we thank you so much, sir, for, for serving in that capacity. If there are no other comments in lieu of our time, our next meeting will...
Well, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, David Williams. I was also, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I also was pleased to be at the meeting where we came together as a region to create this transportation authority that's going to serve all of us. One of the things that I would like to do is put on the agenda for next month, a discussion of the existing NPO boundary that we have and the rural jurisdictions. With the authority, the entire county is now contributing funding to this new authority. So I think it's, you know, time that we go back and revisit the issue about having an NPO boundary in a region now where we have an authority that receives funding from the entire county, not just from within the NPO boundary. So if we could, I would like that added, you know, for discussion in our next meeting.
Yes, Mr. Williams, I, I believe I saw Mr. Parsons making a note of that, and so we will add that to our October agenda.
Please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion or comments?
Madam Chair, it's Kevin Carroll. I just wanted to congratulate Frank Thornton also of being chair. It was my honor to nominate him to the chair position, and wanted to thank David Williams for nominating me for vice chair. We look forward to serving the community and finding the solutions we need to solve these transportation issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Carroll, we absolutely, absolutely thank you for your willingness to serve on this historical authority here in, in our Richmond region. So thank you as well, sir, for your service. If no other comments, our next meeting will be on October 1st, 2020, and we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Check it. Check it.
I will stand and adjourn, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.